Welcome all of you who are joining us in person and those who join us remote. At this time, we'll have the invocation. We'll ask that Minister Reverend and Councilmember DJ here if he will give us the prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance if we could stand.
Dear Lord, once again, we, as your servants, call on you, Father. We thank you for a great week. We thank you, Lord, for a great day. We thank you for the positive growth that's going on all through the city of Fayetteville. We thank you for that, Father. We thank you for all of the positive things that City Council is doing to help the city grow. We thank you for that, Father. Lord, we thank you for life and we thank you for health and strength. Tonight, Lord, as we move forward to go about doing the agenda for the citizens of Fayetteville, we ask you, Lord, to allow our minds to be open, to allow us to be positive in moving forward, and that we can be aggressive in continuing to do what is right for the citizens of Fayetteville. And, Lord, we ask you, in Jesus's name, for all of these things. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember here, and thank you for the prayer. Council, welcome you back from DC. Hope you had a great trip and understood you had some positive things that were accomplished. So, good job. Moving forward to the approval of the agenda, council, if we can, we'll try our iPads and see if they want to cooperate tonight. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
So, no.
All right. Was your iPad working? Okay. All right. It's a motion by Councilmember Ingram. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember here. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, all those in favor, show of hands. Approve the agenda. All right. Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. Moving forward to item 4.01, Downtown Municipal Service District Rate and Contract Award. Mr. Colley. Good evening, sir.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Chris Colley, Economic Community Development. So, tonight, we're going to just give you a brief update on some actions that staff has taken and what's to come in the next couple of months regarding our downtown municipal service district tax rate. So, a little bit of a history I got to learn myself as I was putting this together is we started this tax rate back in 1978, and it's for specific expenditures that are heightened level of service in the downtown as opposed to general city expenditures. Now, ours has been 10 cents per $100 for quite some time, and the state doesn't require us to renew it once you establish it. There's lots of rules around how you establish it, but once it's in place, you don't have to. But City Council has since '83 elected to every five years, vote to renew that tax for another five years. So, the current period is going to expire at June 30th at the end of this fiscal year. And so, we're going to be asking council to renew that taxing rate for another five-year So, to talk about what that rate produces, you can see here, over the past couple of years, it's fluctuated a little bit. It rises gradually, and so, back in 1819, we pulled in about $144,000, and most recently, we pulled in $158,000 with that tax rate. There's also a little bit of interest earnings that get on that money, and then there's a general fund transfer in, which is part of enhancing the arts and entertainment district. So, that's at about $139,000 annually. So, when you add that tax rate plus that general fund transfer in, that gives us close to $300,000 that we then spend on a couple of different things. One being the downtown management contract, utilities for the parking decks, and then debt service for both parking decks. So, this gives you an idea of what the actuals have looked like over time. Some years, we've added money to the savings account. Some years, we've taken money out. I can kind of pause here if there's any questions, or we can just move on to the contract itself.
You have much more of a presentation to go?
I think one more slide.
All right. So, go ahead and go to Councilmember here, and then I had a question.
All right. So, that's on the rate, and then we moved it to the downtown management contract. So, in June 22nd of 2020, one of the first times I came to meet you guys, we authorized a three-year contract with Cool Spring Downtown District for downtown management services. They provide economic vitality, arts and design, promotion and marketing, special events, and then working with the downtown merchants and property owners to deal with any conflicts or things like that. Their contract, that three-year contract, will expire in June of '23 as well, and so, staff is recommending a five-year term, which is the maximum amount allowed in state law, so that these two items can coincide in the future moving forward. Just a quick idea of the timeline here. So, we did a survey of downtown property owners from February 7th through the 28th. That was what's required in state law to survey the residents and the property owners of the district on what services and needs they have. That was largely similar to what we've seen in the past and focused on that arts and entertainment and driving foot traffic downtown. We put out an RFP for downtown management. That's another item that's required by state law. So, that RFP went out on March 15th, and it'll be open until April 14th. Then, here we are tonight at the work session, and then we'll have a public hearing or adoption. And then, if we need to have a future work session, and I think that's an error, the April 24th shouldn't be on there. We'd be looking to do the public hearing and adoption on June 12th, so that that contract and MSD rate will go into play with July 1. So, that's the whole deal, and take any questions.
All right. Yes, sir. Councilmember here.
Thank you, Mayor. Not really any questions. Just wanted to observe, for those that may not be aware, that when this came to us, God, many years ago, it was the downtown business owners, and I assume the residents also, but I do remember the downtown owners coming to us, asking for this tax for them to improve downtown. So, I think it's done well, and whenever the Councilwoman Ingram moves to wherever her motion is, I would like to be the second to move forward, if that's her desire.
Thank you.
Just wanted to observe. That's how far it goes back, and it's been very, very good for the downtown district.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember here. Mr. Colley, can you go back to the tax district fund summary?
That's right, the financials?
Yeah. So, I definitely echo what Councilmember here is saying. It's been a positive, and certainly it's brought some vibrancy downtown. Just had a question about the $51,009.18 fund balance. Why do they need to carry a fund balance if we fund the budget at the passing of the budget, or adopt budget amendments if there are some unpredicted things?
So, that $51,000 was fund balance that we appropriated this past year to do the pilot for the ambassador program. So, that was what was already in the savings account. So, when you see it on this screen, that shows that it's being utilized in this fiscal year to fund that ambassador contract, and so, that's one-time money that'll go away. That fund balance, you can see, is a product of the over and under year-over-year, and it just had added up to a positive of a little over $50,000.
Okay. Speaking of the ambassador program, how, where are we with that, or where are they with that?
I know that I've seen the job advertisement out there. I don't know if they've selected anybody yet, but we can absolutely find that out when we come back and talk about Cool Spring in the future.
Okay. Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. You mentioned that there is that recommendation by staff to extend to a five-year with Cool Springs. Has that discussion with Cool Springs already happened? Are there any room for, I guess, discussion about sort of what's going to keep them working with us? Because they've done a great job. I just want to make sure that we are staying competitive so that we have the best people working there and the best people working for the city and for us. Has that already been sort of detailed, what that five-year contract will look like?
No, sir. So, one of the reasons that I did not state that publicly until tonight is because we are currently in the RFP window, so we are not having conversations with Cool Spring about what they're putting in the bid right now. This is the staff's recommendation for a policy decision by council to align the MSD tax rate resolution with the contract award.
Okay. And Councilmember Ingram?
Yes, thank you. I do would like to add, just as a separate, not from there, that there have been conversations surrounding what that looks like if, if Cool Springs were to be selected again for the award in terms of staffing and whatnot, because we do want whoever is going to be representing the MSD to have, be successful in representing the city. So, at a separate component amongst the board, that has been a conversation, but this is a RFP process, and as it stated in our camp, there is no action, so I would like to gather a consensus vote to accept this presentation.
All right. It's consensus by Councilmember Ingram, seconded by Councilmember here. Any further discussion on this item? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Look like the iPads are on? Who? All right, council, show of hands, those in favor. While we work through the technical. All right. Councilmember McNair, you, okay. All right. It's unanimous. Madam Clerk, thank you, Mr. Colley. Item 4.02 is the Housing Urban Annual Action Plan.
All right. So, this plan, it represents my department's annual budget for the three federal grants that we get. And so, we're going to go through a little bit of what those grants are to kind of remind you. You guys mostly see this once a year, and then we'll talk about what our staff has proposed to the Fayetteville Redevelopment Commission, and that the Redevelopment Commission is now recommending to council. So, there's three major grants here. The Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership, and HOPWA. CDBG can be used for low and moderate income benefit in a lot of different creative and unique ways. Home helps create and maintain affordable housing, and HOPWA is for housing opportunities for people with HIV and AIDS, and so, that helps us with tenant-based rental assistance programs. Also, we can build additional affordable units for those populations. So, how much money are we talking about? You can see it fluctuates a little bit year-over-year. What we're projecting to get from HUD this year is 1.7 mil in CDBG, 1.1 mil in home, and $860,000 in HOPWA, which is only our second year ever of actually having that grant. This kind of looks at it a little bit of a different way here, so the entitlement is the actual grant itself. So, you can see that 1.7, 1.1, and 860, and that adds up to 3.7 mil across the top. Then, we have what's called program income, which means as we give out loans for small businesses or for affordable housing developments, and they pay those loans back, we're able to reinvest that money into these programs as well. There's a required general fund match from the city for home funds, which is about 25% of the total grant, and so, that's $280,000. So, for a total new resources, that bottom-line number in the bold on the right is $4.7 million. Then, we've got some prior-year monies. Y'all know, we've been working on a whole lot of other things on top of these programs right here over the past year, and so, some money has added up, and we've got game plans in place to spend that money. We've got about a quarter million dollars of CDBG left over from last year that we'll be programming out into new expenditures, and then about $2.9 million in home funds. We got a lot more home money. We got several large payoffs last year that we weren't expecting, and so, that kind of stacked up a lot of that money. Then, we have $200,000 of the housing opportunities for people with HIV and AIDS. We set some money aside to try to develop some additional rental units to provide to that program. That project didn't really come through the way we were hoping, and so, we're going to spend that money on rental assistance and supportive services instead. So, the actual process that we go through, just so you can kind of see how it all lays out, back in November, we put out a notice of funding availability, and we had a couple of workshops for stakeholders that were interested. We brought folks in and showed them how to apply for grants, what our money could be used for. And then, over November, all the way through the holidays and into January, that was available for people to apply for grants. We closed that down towards the end of January, and then we worked over the weekend in February and scored all those applications and created an action plan. We then put that plan out for public comment through mid-February to mid-March. We went out and did four community meetings across the community and different rec centers and took feedback from people who came to those meetings. Then, in March, just a week or so ago, we went to our Fayetteville Redevelopment Commission, and we spent a good two hours with them, going in detail over our plans for each one of these grants, what programs are in it. They had a lot of really great questions and made my job a little tougher this year than they have in the past. And so, then, we're here now at the council work session. Moving forward from here, we'll bring it back for council approval, and then we'll submit it to HUD in May. Now, HUD doesn't approve, or they just review it and make sure that it's within the guidelines of our overall five-year plan, with the goal that we start funding these projects in July. So, there's a lot of rules and percentages and set-asides with this money, so I kind of want everybody to understand that a little bit. So, with CDBG, they're kind of generous. They give us about 20% of the grant for administration, but also for planning, and so, that's why I have folks on my staff who are looking at the community and trying to determine what the needs are so that we can spend this money in the most impactful ways possible. 15% of the money can be set aside for public services. A lot of the times, when we talk about grants, that 15% is what we're talking about. That is helping individuals provide services to homeless folks. That is helping with workforce training programs. That's helping with youth engagement and diversion programs. It's legislatively limited to only 15%. When I got here, we were not spending the full 15% of that. We were putting it in other activities, and so, we've been able to, over time, shift that, remove all of our salaries out of it, and make that all grant funds out to the community. Home gives us about 10% for admin, and so, we're able to rely on CDBG to pick up some of the gap there, because home doesn't do as much. And then, there's a 15% set aside for what's called a CHODO, a community housing development organization. And so, in our community, that's Habitat. They have to have a specialized board makeup that doesn't include too many politicians. It doesn't include too many CEOs, and includes some folks who live in Habitat-type housing. And so, they have that board composition, and they help build properties each year for us. And then, with housing with people with HIV and AIDS, we only get 3% of that for admin, and so, that helps pay for a little bit of the paperwork and oversight, but a lot of that work is done by our project sponsor. So, on to the recommendations for what we're looking at doing here. So, here we compare what we did last year to what we're going to, what we're recommending for next year, and then we will talk about a little bit about why some of the numbers fluctuate. So, on the economic development strategy, we've cut about 29% out of that. The largest, the biggest things that we cut were our support for FTCC and a couple of other organizations, because we're going to fund them for three years out of our million dollars in workforce development and the American Rescue Plan. So, FTCC's program that gives textbooks and toolkits to folks, that's been a hugely successful program. We were able to cut $30,000 a year out of this budget and move that over to that one and be able to fund that for three-year period. We've also got a little bit less in our economic development loans. We've got some money stacked up, some of that money that we saw earlier that was rollover, so we don't need quite as much money to continue floating that program year-over-year. On our community development strategy, that's everything from our demolition program to beautification to neighborhood engagement. There's a little bit less money in that, which really, it was funding a nonprofit that did more homelessness and less community development, and that's the small fluctuation you see there. On the housing strategy piece, you can see we're continually pumping more money into housing. We have a housing quality challenge in our community, and so, this is helping fund our partners to go out and do repairs and renovations to homeowners' properties, especially in those senior populations. On the homeless strategy, you can see a 54% increase here. That's largely about funding more and more nonprofits. So, we're looking and investing more into our partner Cumberland Health Net, who's going to help run the day resource center and runs our coordinated entry program, but also funding other nonprofits that, for some of them, it's the first time they've ever worked with the government and gotten a grant. And then, we have a little bit more in our special needs strategy. So, this is going to the Vision Resource Center, and it's a really cool project. They're actually going to buy canes for visually impaired folks that have this new technology in them that actually talks, so that they can help understand what's in front of them. And so, this is a really cool proposal that is a little more expensive than what we put in last year, but it'd be really exciting. And then, our admin planning went up 2%, which is the total growth of the grant went up 2%. So, that's for CDBG only. Moving on to home, everything here is housing, right? So, our home set aside didn't really change. The Housing Trust Fund, we have an 8% decrease in that. Remember I said earlier, we had a bunch of loans that got paid off last year that we weren't expecting, so our budget was a lot bigger last year than it is this year. Our homeowner occupied rehab, so you can see that this is going down to zero. That reflects back on pumping more money into the CDBG-funded stuff. There's less regulations and headache on the CDBG side than there is on the home side. Essentially, with home, we can, with CDBG, we can go in and fix a water heater, fix a broken window, and replace an HVAC. With home, we have to gut that house, and it becomes very expensive. And so, most communities transitioned in the past five or 10 years to using more CDBG and less home for that, so that our home can be used to build new housing. And then, our admin went up about 4%, which was that set aside for that. On to the HOPWA, there's a lot of fluctuation here. You can see that we're not putting any more money in new development until we can really get a program that takes off on the house, for the special population. We put a little bit more money in tenant-based rental assistance and put a lot more money in supportive services. So, talking to our project sponsor, they said the biggest thing that they need is housing navigation for folks in these populations. There's a little bit more money in admin and planning, which just corresponds to the growth of the grant overall. So, on top of that whole game plan there, we're also amending our five-year plan to change some of our policies and rules. And so, right now, when we help somebody buy their home for the first time, we give them down payment assistance, and they sign what's called a resale policy. And that means that later on, when that house gets sold within the 10- or 15-year period that it's under that affordability restriction, that my staff goes to the closing table with them, and we have a complicated calculation that we do that says, "You can only sell this house to that person for this much money, and you can only get this much profit out of it." And we're not really that equipped to do it, and I don't want to be at that table doing that anyway, because that's not somewhere I feel like the city ought to be, saying how much money you can make off of the house you've lived in for 10 years. And so, what we're doing is we're changing our procedures to move to a recapture policy. So, that essentially says that if we give you down payment assistance, if you move in the first five years, you owe us all that money back. But over the next 10 years, after you live there, it goes down by 10% each year until it's completely forgiven at year 15. So, that is equity in that house for that homeowner, regardless of who they sell it to or at what price they sell it to later on. And so, that's essentially the change that we're looking at making here. Part of our process has to be amending our plan, and so, this is part of the public participation process of amending that. So, we've also had a very exciting year in that we got more low-income housing tax credit applications at the state level for our community than we've ever had before. So, just to remind you all, this program's been around since I was born in 1986.
Gee.
It's one of the largest programs that helps folks with capital gains taxes invest back into the community in order to provide for affordable housing. And so, this is administered at the state level through the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, and it's an extremely competitive process. And so, we've got developers who build, you can see here, 14. And so we've got developers who build, you can see here, 14, 15, 17 million dollar apartment complexes, and they go up to the state and they apply for this money. Well, things are not what they used to be in construction costs and affordable housing, and so they're needing more and more gap financing from local governments to make these projects happen. So you can see here, we've got five requests, the total development cost for each one of them, what they're requesting from the city, who the developer is, and then if it's a family or senior facility, and then the number of units. And so what we are looking to get a nod from council on is that I'm going to send all of these folks a letter saying that we are committed to helping fund their project if they win that tax credit award. Now, traditionally in our community, we get maybe two of these. So out of these five, there would be one or two winners come out of it. And so regardless of the combination, we have enough money to fund any two of them. Just to give you an idea of where those are located, here's a map here. You can see a couple of them kind of out west, towards Clifdale Ridge and Scott, and down Rafer Grove, towards the county line. One right here in Tallywood, one up on Bragg Boulevard at Utah Landing, one up north towards the post in Aubrey Hills and Beaver Creek area. And so you can see all five of them kind of spread out throughout the city there. That's very intentional. They're not allowed to propose these in low-income areas because the state will not allow for that concentration of poverty, so they are spread out. And generally speaking, they have to be in the right entitlement in order to move forward. So they have to be zoned multifamily already. So just to kind of recap a little bit, some of the changes that we made this year as we try to improve each year. We moved our grant opportunities to an online application portal. We purchased a software called Constant Contact that has a big, huge list of everybody that we meet throughout the year and pumps out emails and information to them as things come available. Our marketing communications team helped us really with a social media push. I went out to dinner one night, and somebody had the Fade TV thing on behind the bar, and pops up my community relations manager talking about our citizen participation stuff. And I just thought it was so cool to just see that out somewhere and, you know, say, "Hey, that's what I do," you know? We did those two stakeholder pre-application workshops and talked to folks who were interested in mental health and homelessness, youth diversion, and crime prevention. And then we also removed staff salaries from the nonprofit pot of grant funding. So we're no longer leaning on that anymore, and we're using that to put more grants out in the community. On housing development, our staff has been intensively trained to develop more housing. I just had five folks go to Chapel Hill for a week this past week. And we brought on expert consultants to help guide those efforts and ensure compliance with all these different types of money that we have. And so we're really building a stronger and more efficient engine to spend this money to impact our community and invest more in housing as well. So the next steps on this would be the work session tonight and then a public hearing and adoption on the 24th. And then we would submit this to HUD by May 15th. We still haven't got our letter yet. We get an official letter that comes to the mayor that says how much money. So we have to wait for that letter to submit to HUD, but as soon as we get that letter, we'll be ready to shoot it up to HUD and get rolling. So that's what we've got for tonight. I'm looking just for a consensus that we're on the right path, but any questions, I'm happy to take them.
I do have one, and then I had a follow-up, so have council member here.
Thank you. Mr. Colley, I've been impressed ever since you have come into this department and you and your team. Good to see some of you all here tonight. I've been impressed with what you all have been doing. You've been growing, and it's looking real good. You made a statement about the rental, there was a, something didn't go complete, and you said it would allow more rental assistance funds to be used? Okay, and that was much earlier than this slide. And then when you got to this slide, I saw the 400K and the 500K. What was that that didn't go the way you thought it was going to be in order to build up this amount of money to allow us to continue to do more? Because rental assistance still is a need for.
Yes, sir. So that was specific to the HOPWA program. We set aside that $200,000 last year to help partner with those apartment complexes to build more units that are specific to that population. We didn't get it rolling like we thought we would. There were some logistical challenges with it. We had to go back and meet with our HUD technical assistance folks and really learn how to do that. So we can't have that money sitting until we get ready to make that happen, so we rolled that into rental assistance this year.
Right, okay, good, good, good. My final question is, I did not see a bullet unless it's loaded into another name. The community sign project, is that something that would be a part of this discussion? Because it's, I think it's been a very good item for communities and building pride and them working together with staff and the community as far as, you know, landscaping and things along those community signs. Where is that in here?
So that's largely going to be in your general fund budget as you go through your budget work sessions. We do have money set aside for beautification, and we're using that for public art-type projects or helping nonprofits that might have a community center that's got a messed-up roof where we can go in and kind of help them fix those things up in the neighborhood.
Well, thank you. Good job. I'll be looking for that in our budget discussion for the community signs. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Before I go to Councilman Ingram, a couple of questions, Mr. Colley. Are you familiar with the Justice 40 Initiative, the executive order signed by the President that 40% of all federal dollars from each program go to address under investment in disadvantaged and marginalized communities?
Yes, sir.
Are we meeting that?
So my understanding, I just sent that up to Greensboro, to our HUD rep to get her guidance on it. My understanding is that all of our programs benefit low and moderate income, and so every dollar we spend is already into that bucket. But I'm having her confirm that because I'm not entirely sure.
Right, I know it ultimately meets the goal of the population, but I think that the Justice 40 said it would go into those communities.
Yeah, so everything that we do has to go into areas of low and moderate income. And so that's defined by their census tracts and the block groups that are smaller than that. And so we have to prove to HUD that every dollar we spend benefits those low and moderate income.
So if you go back to the potential awards for this year, go back to that page, the map.
Oh, yes, yeah.
So when you show this, are each one of these stars in a census tract that's low to moderate income according to federal guidelines?
So no, this wouldn't go to that. This would go to the benefit to the renters who live there would be the low and moderate income.
Right.
Because they, yeah, the way that the housing tax credit program works, they won't let you put one in a low and moderate income area.
No, I'm with you, but how does that go with, because you're still using HUD dollars, and that executive order transcends across all 16 federal agencies. So how does that align with the executive order if it's not going to an area? Because on the one hand, HUD's got a policy not to concentrate poverty, but on the other hand, it's saying 40% of the dollars that you get from any federal department need to go to an area of poverty. How are you making sure that we're compliant?
That's a really good question. I didn't ask that specifically, and I think I need to amend my question up to Greensboro to figure that piece out. The only thing I can think of is that HUD has a clause in large construction contracts called Section 3, which means that you have to invest a certain amount of that money in what's called a Section 3 business, which is a business owned by minorities or owned by people who live and work in low and moderate income areas. And so when we trigger that Section 3 piece, we have to actually track what businesses were a Section 3 business, who had Section 3 employees, and how did they benefit with the dollars?
Okay, because I got to request any of your department to ask about that for not just what you're presenting at night, but any of those programs that we've gotten federal dollars for to ask, are they hitting those targets?
Yes, sir. That was my prompt to send that up to Greensboro.
All right, last question I have is, the only CHODO we have in town, I love Habitat, so I'm not asking that question for any kind of assessment of them, but the only CHODO we have in town is Habitat?
So there's one or two other folks who could qualify as a CHODO, and we would not turn them away by any stretch. Right now, we've got quite a bit of money set in that CHODO reserve. Habitat's the one active that's coming to us and working with us. Kingdom CDC just brought me a project a few weeks ago that our consultant's looking at to see how do we make that a reality. In that case, Kingdom would be acting as a CHODO. But any nonprofit that wants to build affordable housing, and I mean, they don't have to have that specific board makeup. Just that 15% of money has to go towards a nonprofit that's got that specific board makeup.
So I guess where I'm going with that is, the CHODO has a certain requirement that says it has to be structured a certain way. So the nonprofits that are not there, I'm not really talking about them. I'm talking about the specific amount of CHODOs that we have that meet that criteria. Have we reached out to make sure that they are a part of the discussion?
Absolutely, yeah. That is Kingdom and Habitat.
Okay, so they're the only two in town?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and, you know, we talked for a long time in our community about the CHODOs, and a lot of folks kind of saw that as a barrier because that meant they had to go change their bylaws and change the way their board is made up and stuff like that. They don't need to be a CHODO to come work with us. They just need to want to build affordable housing and then run it once we've built it.
And the last question I have is about the BLIGHT. Can you go back to that funding model of the BLIGHTed projects? So we've got a, or is it that, okay. So we've got about a 10% reduction in money for BLIGHTed projects. How are we making that up? You doing it out of another bucket of funds, or are we just doing 10% less?
So I put about 100 grand into BLIGHT last year to go aggressively, and it just didn't pan out because, you know, our programs are voluntary. And so we had this idea that our neighborhood engagement folks were going to be out in the community. They're going to be talking to neighbors. They're going to be identifying BLIGHTed structures and then reaching out and asking people if we could tear them down. And that just didn't kind of work the way we thought. We only spent about $60,000. And so I'm just reducing that from 100 to 90.
Well, last thing I'll say and just ask for your consideration. We've got a lot of seniors and others who fall into the BLIGHTed list because they need repairs or need the house burnt up. I have one lady on Preston that I had sent you about. I know it's one conversation to say, "Can we tear your house down?" But are we having a subsequent conversation to say that, "Do we have a program for you to build it back?"
Yes, sir, and that's largely where that money went there. You can see the 24% increase in the housing repairs below it because that is the other piece of that.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, Ms. Merrick. Quick question for you. Do we participate in the, it's the North Carolina Housing Conference? And then also the HUD's, I think, Summit HUD that they do? Do we participate in those?
So there's a North Carolina Housing Coalition. And actually, I just talked to him on the phone last week when we got some legislation changes at the state level to see what the thought process was. So, yeah, we're very active with that. They do a weekly call on Tuesday mornings that we join in and listen to. As far as HUD goes, there are some national conferences. We haven't gone in a couple of years. COVID canceled a lot of that. And as soon as we get some breathing room, we're going to go to some conferences and learn some more. But, you know, the game plan the past couple of years has been rapidly training our team to get up to speed to deal with the housing challenges in our community.
Okay, and then also our redevelopment areas, last year we reworked the redevelopment areas. How does that play into this packet here?
So those redevelopment areas largely are those low and moderate income areas that the mayor was talking about. And so, you know, we've got Bonny Dune and 71st, Massey Hill, Deep Creek, the B Street Campbellton area, and then Murchison. And so if you kind of track our low and moderate income census tracts, they very closely follow those areas.
Okay, thank you. And also I'd like to highlight two of our redevelopment commission members here being here with us tonight and the great work that they do. Thank you for being here. And I just want to make sure that I heard correctly. We're going to receive the report, but there was an interest to keep the BLIGHT dollars at 100,000? Was that a?
No, I just kind of wanted to explain the reduction because I knew we had a lot of BLIGHT that we constantly do, and I'm not sure how much that cost the city with doing the demos, but I just wanted to make sure it was partnered with the other resources, so.
Because previously, we would run out of money, right?
So with, I think, ACM Oliver, you want me to take a swing?
I could use a break.
I know you're not feeling well completely. So we do have the demo money in the general fund for development services. So we have two pots of money that we can pull from for BLIGHT assistance. And I'm guessing that you may be thinking about the money in development services where we do demos, and we do traditionally run out of money in that.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'd like to gather consistent motion to receive the 2023-2024 Housing and Urban Development Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant Home Investment Partnerships and Housing Opportunities for People with HIV/AIDS Programs.
All right, there's a motion by Councilwoman Ingram, second by Councilwoman Mahendros. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, let's try the iPad. All right, Madam Clerk, is she unanimous?
Mr. Mayor, to a question that was asked earlier about our ambassador program within the Cool Springs Downtown District, we just onboarded two individuals, so you'll see some good things coming from that soon.
Good, thank you for the update.
If I can beg for forgiveness, Councilwoman Ingram, thank you for recognizing my commissioners back here. That was oversight on my part. They just put in two hours going through a lot more detail than you guys got on this stuff. And you're also going to see them out in the community quite a bit more. They were inspired by our human relations folks and have made some goals to be out there a little bit more, talking about our programming and partnering.
Who are your commissioners?
So if I'll stand up here.
Ms. Sharon and who else?
I've got Shamika Bathe, who is our chair, and Sharon Moore.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
All right, sir. All right, council moving to item 4.03 Parks and Rec Project Report Card. Mr. Stone, how are you, sir?
Doing well, Mayor. Good to see you, council member. Let's see if I can find. All right, it's come back, again, time to bring another update to you about the Parks and Rec projects. Real quick, we'll be talking about Bill Chris Center, Senior Center East, MacArthur Sports Complex, Mazaric Tennis Center, Gilmore Center, Mabel C. Smith, Cape Fear River Park, and MLK Junior Park. Real quick, just hit the ones, you've seen this before, is the slide we've had of the completed projects. I won't go through them all. The last one, we actually were able to complete and add to the list was Jordan Soccer Complex. The good news is that this one will be added next time around. When we come up next time, you'll be seeing the Bill Chris Senior Center on this one. The main reason I left it on here is we actually received the certificate occupancy last week. We finally got the final things worked out. We've got a few more items that I think the contractors completed with the punch list items. We had some things we had to do with the erosion control. But just want to make sure we brought that up and recognize that that will be on the completed list next time around. There were some of the pictures from the ribbon cutting we had. Senior Center East, we had a little bit of delay on this project as we were waiting on the pre-engineered metal building. That actually arrived Friday. It's on site, so we're glad to see that. As I mentioned, we pushed back a little bit, so we're looking at a substantial construction completion on the 23rd. The erosion, all the site work is going very well. That went, is going very well. The only issue we had on that total was just waiting on the metal building to arrive, so. And here's some of the renderings as well as the groundbreaking ceremony. And then the MacArthur Road Sports Complex, as you are aware, this final build-out of this 75-acre lot in partnership with Fort Bragg was the cost estimate was well over, is right at 18 million, a little bit over 18 million dollars, and we'll update that as we go through. We actually just received the final construction plans on this today. So we've received those from the architect. So now the next step of that, now we consider pretty much shovel-ready. We can take that project. And so we're looking at applying for the Defense Community Investment Program. That's a federal grant. We will have to match that. There'll be some matching funds with that, but we will do that in June. Mr. Redding, Brooke Redding is heading that up for us. And so from there, I think we're expecting that answer to come sometime in December, sometime toward the end of the year. We feel like we've got a really good shot at that, but again, this is an application process. So next time around, we should have a little bit more information for you is where we're staying on that, getting that submitted. And here's the site, as you remember, it's right there at 295 MacArthur, just inside Fort Bragg. And there is one of the early renderings of the design that we're actually using. The next one is Mazaric Tennis Center. You just recently, the council just recently approved the contract for the tennis courts. So that is working its way through. We are still waiting. If you remember, we did a value engineering with the designer on this one and switched the building from stick-built to pre-engineered metal building. So that is being finalized. We're expecting that this week, that final design on that. Once that goes through, we will talk with the contractor. We right now have a substantial completion. It's October. I'm afraid that will probably move simply because the pre-engineered metal building, once we, the design is given to the contractor to get on that list and to get that ordered. We've seen the delay in that department, so we'll adjust that as we go. But once we have that moving forward, we'll, again, it's... But, uh, once we have, uh, that moving forward, it will, again, it's, hopefully, we'll be out of some of that delay, but we're seeing that all, um, all the way across. But, uh, so we, you should be seeing the tennis court, actually tennis court work being done here fairly soon. So, we started on that. The site works come along very well on that. And here's some of the renderings, um, as, as you remember, the, the number of courts we have up there with the championship court and then the building itself. Uh, the Dorothy Gilmore Recreation Center, uh, we, we had to slide this one a little bit. On this one, we also had a delay on the pre-engineered metal building. That, uh, we actually had steel going up today. That was, uh, we finally were able to get that in, in, in hand and were able to do it. And now we're seeing a delay in the supply chain for HVAC. Um, we're, we're seeing this in a couple of other areas as well. Um, HVAC was delayed until June. So, right now, our substantial completion date is in October. So, hopefully, that won't move again. Uh, that has slid a little bit, but, so like I mentioned, that, that steel hasn't went up today. The initial steel's going up. And here's some of the, uh, work. You can see some of the outside work as well, some of the insi- and interior work being done, uh, on that facility. Uh, Maple C Smith, uh, council just approved the construction contract here recently. We're still working with the co- uh, the, the contractor to get that timeline in. I know there has been a desire, so we're trying to target to do a groundbreaking for the Maple C Smith Center as well as at the same time as we open the splash pad. We just want to make sure that coordination goes well, that we're not putting anyone in, in harm's way with the construction going on. So, we're, we're having, um, actually a pre, um, construction meeting with the contractor tomorrow to discuss some of these things. So, hopefully, we can get that done and, and meet that target to, to do that one time in, in, um, in May. And we're looking at, uh, substantial completion, completion of the building in, in next year, March 24th, so. And then here's some of the renderings. Uh, you're familiar with the rendering of the building and the, and the location. And as you can see in the, in the picture, uh, the splash pad and the new playground. So, it looks really good out there. Uh, the Cape Fear River Park, we've talked about this. You know, the gentleman with the designer came in and, and presented an overall plan to, to council, uh, a few months back. Uh, that overall plan was about nine million, a little over nine million dollars to get there in, with phases. Uh, right now, we're kind of on a, just wait and see on this one as we look, work through some of the other projects, MacArthur and some of the other ones to make sure as we approach these. Uh, but right now, you, you've seen that, uh, we've, we've got an opportunity there to make some improvements. There's a, uh, about 2.3 million dollars in this budget as of now. But, so we'll, once we move forward on that. And here's some of the, the plans, if you remember, from the presentation that was presented. Uh, with Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Park, uh, right now, I was going to show the pictures. You're familiar with those. Uh, right now, we're still, we, we had a good meeting, Mr. Hare and with, uh, the MLK Committee and, and the city, talk about where, where we were at. And I think, um, we're still looking at getting that MOA back from MLK Committee. So, as soon as we have that back, then we can work out our details. So, until we have that back from them. So, I think they were having some concerns about some of the things in there. So, just making sure their legal team was, uh, comfortable with that, so. And I think that's all I had. I went through it pretty quick. If you've got any questions?
All right, uh, Councilmember Hare?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Stone. Um, and I was looking for Mr. Gibson because he knew I was going to ask this very question. Uh, w- we had had some discussion. I think there's been some support from council. I can't remember that far back, but I think so, with the, uh, the Glenview Lake. Um, and I do know that m- uh, Mr. Gibson said that we were in the preliminary phases as far as preliminary plans and, and a number of other preliminary phases. Wh- wh- where are we, uh, with that? Because I'm still looking for it to be a part of update.
I understand. Uh, that is actually not part of my group's, um, projects, but I know, I think the, um, the next update's supposed to come as part of the Murkison Road update. That, that, I think it's included in that, I believe.
And when is that going to be, sir?
I am not sure, Mr. Hare.
Uh, you don't have to worry about it now.
But we can get back to you.
Please let me know, uh, this week? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And so, Councilmember Hare, that, um, the Glenville Lake piece won't be in the Parks and Rec Bond projects. That'll, that'll be on the Murkison Road side, so the manager could probably get that.
Okay.
Update, yeah. All right, uh, Councilmember, uh, Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just for the, um, audience out there, talking about the, um, MacArthur Road, um, Sports Complex. Um, when we went to Washington this week, we all went up there and discussed about our grant. And just for the public to know that everyone that we spoke to in our legislation was very excited and very proud because it, it, it took our senators and our representatives up on the fe- federal level to get this, um, project moving. And it will be the first in the nation that this is happening. So, um, to my council members, you know, our new thing is we are the largest neighbor to the largest military installation. And I want you to know that people respected that when we would talk about it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. Quick question before I go to Councilmember Ingram, uh, Mr. Stone. As you look at the river park, um, so, two things. One, the, the funding gap of the MacArthur Road Park that she just mentioned, can you go back to that real quick?
Yes, sir.
The timeline piece, probably. All right, so, we're not applying for the grant until June, I guess, right?
Yes, sir.
Then we don't know how long the grant will take to be reviewed or awarded, right?
From what I understand, it's be right at the end of the year, toward December, I believe.
So, what do you anticipate?
September, I'm sorry, September, I'm sorry.
So, do you have, uh, material fluctuation costs that we are concerned? Because right now, inflation is eating up this, this, this small amount.
Yes, sir, now.
What if we don't get it? Do we have a backup plan?
Uh, we will have to come back to council for guidance on that, yes, sir. Right, right now, what we're, we're looking at is once we, we've got the final project, we're going to do a, a new up, update on that cost as part of this submission. So, we make sure we have everything in, in hand on that.
All right, and last thing, can you go to the river park, uh, schematic? All right, so, I was, I was down in Wilmington and, uh, we'll talk about that a little later tonight. But their river park is, is really a boardwalk, um, that they built that allowed people to traverse, enjoy the river. It cleaned it up a bit like your recommendation had. How difficult is it to, to take and extend the current boardwalk or to create a boardwalk for a certain section? Because it's really not that long if you, if you walk down, down the one, if you're familiar with, with Wilmington. Uh, how difficult is it to build a boardwalk out?
It's, it's not very difficult. The, the difference between Wilmington and ourselves is the, is the difference on the height of the river, how far the river is below the, where we're at. So, again, that's part of what you see there in the, in the, in the diagram showing. We would need a floating dock to be able to take advantage of that, to be able to access it. Uh, but i- i- is, we're doing a lot of the, um, trails now, you know, or beside the river. It's just, i- i- and some of that's asphalt, some of that's boardwalk. So, it's just a matter to design it. Again, we'd just be on the edge. We just wouldn't be right up against the river like Wilmington has.
Okay, gotcha. All right, Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you. I, I, I would like some clarity on, on this whole report. So, based off of what I'm hearing verbally, this is the Parks and Rec Bond update, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, as it's positioned, it's Parks and Rec Park Projects Report Card.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I, I was also kind of looking to get an update about Glenville, our trails, and Veterans Park. So, I guess moving forward, can we make sure we give a distinct difference of the, 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 the pot of whatever this is versus the other? Because we do have these other things that we are working on aggressively that are good in the city, um, and versus the, the bond. Um, with that, I, did I have any other? Okay, that, that's all. Um, so, I'd like to gather consensus motion, um, to accept the Parks and Rec Bond Project Report Card.
All right, consensus motion by Councilmember Ingram, seconded by Councilmember Hare. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All right, counsel, let's look to our iPads.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hewitt? He said, "Don't forget him on the update."
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stone. Okay. Got sidetracked, I'm sorry. Unanimous vote, Madam Clerk? All right, item, uh, 4.04, at the Attorney's Office. Good evening, attorneys.
Good evening.
Good evening, counsel. Now, the cam says that you can reject this training if you want to, so you won't hurt my feelings. So, no rejects, okay. Well, um, we're going to talk about tonight, um, just to give you a refresher course on special use permits and evidentiary hearings. As you know, um, our ordinance requires the special use permits, uh, do six things. One is to comply with the ordinance, um, be in harmony with the area in which the special use, the applicant is looking to, um, um, to build or where the special use will take place. Um, it materially, whether, uh, not, the applicant has to show that it does not materially endanger the public safety and health of, um, the community, is in general conformity with the city's adopted plans and would not substantially injure the value of the abutting lands, and complies with all other state laws. Now, we require this under, um, the U D Co- U D O, um, which is Chapter 30, Section 32.7. So, under 160D, um, special use permits have to, um, um, have, you have, um, the government body has to hold a quasi-judicial, and now they refer to as an evidentiary hearing. Now, um, that just means that the Council Act says to jury. So, um, unlike in the legislative cases and legislative hearings where you have a public hearing and everybody comes up to speak, you can either, um, consider what they say or you completely ignore it. You can base your decision on your opinion. Um, you can't do that in an evidentiary hearing. In an evidentiary hearing, only those who have standing can speak. The person, um, those speaking have to speak under, um, give testimony under oath. Um, people have to be available for cross-examination. So, you can't just hand over some materials and no one be available to be questioned on it. Um, it has to be about the majority of the board and, um, there's no time limit on those hearings. Your decision for evidentiary hearings and evidentiary hearings have to be made within a reasonable time. It has to be based on competent material and substantial evidence, and it has to be in writing. Your findings of facts have to be based on that evidence that you heard at the hearing that supports whatever conclusion you're going to make. So, if you have, um, you find that you are going to deny the permit, then you have to say in your findings of facts, your findings of facts have to reflect what you heard in that hearing that support you denying that permit. Um, conversely, if you're going to approve the permit, you have to say in those findings of facts, and the, and the facts that you depend on have to be competent. They have to be material and they have to be substantial. Um, competent meaning it has to be legally admissible. Substantial meaning it has to be relevant evidence and it has to support it. So, you know, in court, you hear in criminal cases, beyond a reasonable doubt. That's the highest level standard. And civil court, you hear by a preponderance of the evidence. That's the next medium. Substantial evidence comes under a preponderance of evidence. It's not as high as a preponderance, but you still have to have and be able to point to some facts that you heard in that hearing that's going to support you either denying or approving that permit.
Before you move forward, can I ask her a question on which, where she is, uh, Mr.?
Uh, so, let, let me, let me get through the slide. I've got Councilmember Hare and Ingram. She, she's coming. Just jot it down for me, Councilmember Hare, too.
It's on this one, though, the decisions.
Okay.
All right.
And then, um, it has to be in writing. That means it's reduced to writing with your findings of facts and your conclusions of law. And then, if you, um, usually, the next meeting after you approve a special use permit, you'll see the findings, the facts and conclusions of law on the considered agenda. It's required that you approve that, um, um, for it to be, um, valid, for the decision to be valid. That's something new under 160D. So, I would encourage you that when you see findings of facts in approval, you know, remember, um, go back through and if you see something in those findings that, no, that's not what you said or you didn't agree with that, then to, um, let us know, pull it, let us know, we can go back and, um, and look at the record and get that straight. And that's why it's so important, when you make your motions, that you pull out things that you thought were important in the testimony that you heard that, um, support whatever decision you make. So, I always, um, encourage other, um, commission members and other boards that hear quasi-judicial and, uh, a whole evidentiary hearings, which would be the zoning commission and the historic resources commission, as to why you're listening to the evidence. You can make a column, support or deny, and to write down those things because sometimes you may hear so many witnesses coming forth that, um, you may forget by the end of it, um, what you thought was important to support your decision. So, you can always make a column and write it down.
Uh, before you go to the next slide, because, you know, there are some who don't have law degrees like us. But, uh, so I'll go to Councilmember Hare and Ingram just so we.
That's a good one, man. Um, I'm thinking, and thank you, I think this is very good to, to, to have. And I thought I was, well, n- nevertheless, whenever we're up for denying, and I go back to a particular case that we had some time ago, and we use in the denying one of the items in the findings of facts. But, am I also understanding, according to what's on the decision slide now, is that we also can write down what we have heard, if I'm understanding correctly? What we have heard in the evid- evidential discussion? That we can use that also alone with the finding of fact? Or did I not understand that correctly?
Well, um, what I mean is that your writing of your decision is your findings of facts and conclusion of law. The finding of fact and conclusion of law that comes to you on that next, um, meeting that has already been typed out and everything for you, based on what has been said at the hearing, is what I mean by it has to be in writing.
Okay, so, if there is a denial that, because I know it comes back to us twice, right? So, if there is a denial that is stated within that first meeting from one of the findings of facts, when the following meeting comes, are you saying that only what was stated in the finding of facts for a denial will come back in writing and not writing anything additional that we heard? So, I'm not writing anything I heard. I only can speak on what's listed in the finding of facts. Because what if something is stated in the finding of fact? I mean, what if something is stated through the, uh, the speaking of whoever's in front of us and it's not anything that is in the finding of fact that you want to use for denial?
You don't have to use what everyone said, but what she's suggesting is because these hearings tend to have a lot of speakers.
Mm-hmm.
She's saying, as they go along, you can jot down what they say to support or as a basis to support or deny the special use permit.
Okay, stay right there.
Uh-huh.
Even if it has nothing to do with what you, what's listed in- Even if it has nothing to do with what you, what's listed in the finding of fact, that's what my discussion is, that's what my concern is.
Well, the evidence that they present, any of the evidence that is presented should support either the findings of fact or go against those findings of fact. So, for instance, Lisa, give them, um, what's one of the findings of fact, that it can't substantially, is it substantially harm?
Well, substantially harm the value of the adjoining lands.
So, if they come before you and a person says, "This won't substantially harm the value of the neighborhood because this," let's say they're building, you had one where they wanted to build duplexes and it was single family, and they say, "Well, it won't substantially harm the value of the neighborhood, because although it is a duplex, it will look like a single-family home, it will be valued at the same price as the values in the home," and whatever other facts, then you jot that down, and if you move to approve it, then you would recite those facts in support of, of that particular finding.
Yeah, but I'm, and I'll go along with, I mean, I've, I've done a number of them, so I'm, I'm fine with that. But, I'm still going on, because of what I saw here in, in item C in the decisions, I was thinking that if a speaker comes up and they speak something that they say is gonna cause harm to their community, but does not line up with one through seven of the finding of facts, that's all that I'm saying. That, that's where my, I mean, do we only use the finding of facts, which we have done thus far?
That is what you have to use, is the findings of fact and the evidence that's presented to support.
The conclusion.
Okay. I won't go into further, thank you.
Okay, so I'm sorry if I've confused you more.
No, no problem, no problem.
'Cause I know you've done a lot of these.
Yeah.
But, um, let's see if we can...
So, maybe, Mr. Here, we can also talk a little bit more offline.
Yeah, yeah, maybe I can speak.
I think, I think, though, the point to Ms. Harper's presentation is, after we've had several of those last year, as well as changes in the state law.
Right, right.
We want to make sure that the council is versed on how these special use permits should be handled.
Okay.
And unlike subsection C, I think is a change, in that the law now requires it to come back to you.
Right, right.
It used to be, before the change in the state law, that you all would have the hearing and you would make your decision.
Right.
That night, and then it would not come back to you, it would simply be presented to the mayor for his signature. Now, it comes back to you at the next meeting on your consent agenda for the actual council to approve it.
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll have a sidebar, but thank you.
Okay.
All right.
So, um...
I had Councilmember Ingram before you go on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Harper.
I'm okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Turner Harper, please.
Okay, so the next is standing.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I do apologize, Councilmember Hondros, Pettis.
Councilmember Hondros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, Ms. Harper, how are you today?
I'm good.
So, for my edification, to piggyback on Councilmember Harris' comments, so, if a applicant or someone speaking against brings up, for example, traffic, or stormwater, or values, if they're not a subject matter expert, then they can't necessarily speak on those things, right? So, if it's, a neighbor can't say, "I'm against this project just because it's gonna negatively impact traffic in my neighborhood," unless they're a traffic engineer or traffic study's been done, correct?
Okay, Mr. Hondros, so you know you sat in on one of my trains before, so you jumping ahead of me.
Okay.[872.88][872.88](Laughter) I'll wait then.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Harper.
Okay. So, who has standing? Because remember, I said you have to have standing to speak. The applicant always has standing, the city will have standing, and those persons who are affected by the action will have standing. And that doesn't mean you just live in fable and, you know, when it rains, it's gonna rain on you too. You have to show that it's gonna rain on me differently than it's gonna rain on everybody else. So, those, that's when you have standing, and that standing can be challenged if, let's say, someone comes in for a special use permit, the applicant speaks, and then someone stands and they wanna speak in opposition, the applicant can object to council and say, "They don't have standing," and they have to show how they have standing. So, another, um, requirement is you have to have competent material substantive, substantive, uh, substantial evidence. And, um, what does that mean? It means you have to ask yourself, when people, when the applicant is speaking for you, uh, before you, if the opponent is speaking before you, is this evidence reasonable? Is their saying reasonable? Does it make sense? Does it help you to decide whether or not this permit should be issued or not be issued? Is it, is the evidence hearsay? When my cousin told me that big brothers down the street said that this is not gonna be good for the community, that's not competent, relevant, material evidence, hearsay cannot be competent material and substantial evidence. Um, is it just the opinion of a person, and if it is the opinion of the person, is that person uniquely qualified to give an opinion? So, here we are. Someone comes in and they say, "Well, you know, you build that apartment complex by my house and it's gonna increase traffic." Well, then you ask them, "Well, um, are you a traffic engineer?" "No, I work at the bakery."[1027.23][1027.23](Laughter) Um, "Well, what evidence do you have that says that they're gonna, it's gonna to increase traffic? I just feel it all down in my shana na, that the traffic is gonna be increased." That is not, um, expert testimony. But if they come in and they say, "I'm a traffic engineer, I've been, I have a degree, master's, master's degree from North Carolina State, been doing this for twenty-five years, I know the area, I've got the data here, let me present it to you, this is gonna, this is how it's gonna present traffic." I'm pretty safe to say, you know, that's somebody who's an expert witness and qualified to testify as to traffic. So, those are some questions you have to ask yourself.
Excuse me, Ms. Harper, so if you feel it down in your shana na, that don't qualify you?
Nah, if you're shana na, it's really not expert testimony, unless it's my shana na, 'cause I have really good instinct.[1089.11][1089.11](Laughter) Okay.
So, going to, but basically going to Councilmember Hondros' question earlier, in which, I think, you wanna go with your question now?
No, I think we're pretty much hitting it, so, you know, if I wasn't, I, I will just have a, a backup question. So, if I wasn't on the board and I was just a applicant or a dissenter to an applicant, I can't just simply say, as a real estate broker, this is gonna negatively impact home values in the neighborhood, unless I've conducted a study to that effect.
Yes, yeah, you, you have to, and you know, the courts are really just beginning to, um, make decisions to decide what is really that competent evidence. And we're gonna go through some, um, some exercises in a little bit. But, um, the more data you have to support your assertions, that even though you're a realtor, but if you haven't done any study of that area, then that really is not sufficient to support the, your, your assertion.
Last question for my edification and for the benefit of my colleagues, so, who's, when we talk about standing, who has standing, whose burden is that? Is it for us as council members to ask, "Are you an engineer?" Or is that the applicant and the dissenters to say, "Hey, you're not a expert in that?" Or can we question that from...
Well, you know, this is an evidentiary hearing, so the applicant has a right to cross-examine witnesses, um, the applicant can cross-examine witnesses, the opponent can cross-examine witnesses. But, and they have, if they want to object to that person having standing, then they would ask those questions to show whether or not they have standing. Now, you know, usually, when a speaker comes up to speak to you, you're gonna ask them their name, their address, and, and usually in the other commission meetings, we say, "What's your relationship to the case?" And when you say, "What's your relationship to the case?", that, um, that will give a presumption that they have standing. Now, if, um, they say, you say, "What's your relationship to the case?", and they say, "Well, I don't really have a relationship to the case, I wasn't doing anything tonight, and I wanted to speak to you, so I thought I'd come to speak to you." I think that you can kinda get that in your head, you don't need anybody else to tell you, they barely don't have standing.
But if a dissenter, someone that's signed up to speak opposing a project, if they say, "Well, I'm opposed to this because I think it's gonna negatively impact stormwater, we already have flooding if it's a bad storm," is it only the applicant's burden to say, "Hey, are you an engineer, have you had a study done?", or can we ask that from the base?
You can ask that too.
Thank you.
So, um, we've covered some hearsay, she say, he says, statements, petitions with names of people who oppose or in favor of, but they are not present for, to be asked questions, then that's hearsay evidence also. Notarized statements from people, they say, "Well, it's notarized, it just, it still doesn't matter." That person is not here, so you can say, "Did you put, is this your signature, did you sign this petition?" They need to be available for questioning, the people who may be submitting letters need to be available for questioning. Expert opinions, people who have the education, the training, and knowledge, and experience to testify as to whatever the subject matter is, be that, um, a traffic engineer, someone with stormwater, um, a realtor doing an appraisal of the neighborhood. So, if there are not any questions, I've got three short exercises that we can sort of run through. If you don't wanna run through it, it's not gonna hurt my feelings, 'cause I know everybody wants to get home for the game. But, um, the first exercise deals with public health and safety.
Uh, you need to give them a chance to...
Oh, they haven't read it, okay.
To say whether they want to.
Do you all wanna do the exercises, there's just three? Now, Mr. Benevente said he don't wanna hear.
I'm doing enough bar prep as it is. I did have a question, though.
Okay.
City attorney, or, or, perhaps it's gonna be as well, it seems like we're really raising the bar on the way we do these types of permitting, because it sounded like we're gonna be qualifying expert witnesses, or we're expecting, you know, people to voir dire an expert witness, or to argue whether or not they're truly experts, whether or not they have conflict of interest in the matter they're speaking on, because, you know, they're a real, uh, real estate developer for themselves, and, you know, they're, they're describing how everything's gonna be fine, and sort of testifying on their own behalf as an expert. That's what I've seen in the past six, seven months of being on council, is a lot of that. And by the standard we're talking about here, I couldn't see how anyone who's come up to us with an S U P should have gotten it.
And your question?
Is that the case? We're sort of letting everyone know right now that the bar is much higher than it's been applied?
I think the bar has, um, has always been high. I think that at times, um, we have taken a somewhat less formal approach than we probably should. But the point of the, the, of the training was more so because of the changes in the state law, as well as the changes in the council's findings of fact, which I think took place, um, or has taken place since you've been on council. We had several last year that, um, caused us to take a look and reevaluate the standards and to update those, and we wanna make sure that council not only receives this training, but also, I guess, to your point, let people know what is expected during this, this process.
I guess the last question would be then, I know that traditionally before they come before council, they're sitting down with, I think, the planning or the zoning department?
Development.
Excuse me, development?
Yeah.
Are our city attorneys a part of that conversation to let them know what the expectation is once they come to council and...
We are not a part of that conversation, but when they meet with the development staff, the development staff takes great pains to share with them, these are the seven findings of fact, or eight, or how many ever it is, I don't remember.
We can't exactly give them legal advice either.
Right, but, but, but the staff does, um, not only when they meet with them, but then when they follow up with them, they share with them, "These are the eight findings of fact," and that's why you will see some people come up and actually read those findings of fact verbatim. Sometimes they provide evidence in support of those findings, and sometimes they don't do as well. But that is why, they are told about that, and that is why you see that happening sometimes.
Thank you, Madam Attorney.
So, and the first exercise deals with public health and safety.
So, did they say they want to do the exercises, or did they just say, "No"?
Yeah, yeah, we, we do. Is it required, right?
No, it's not required.
This is, this is coun, council, this is up to the council, and I thought...
Oh, well, uh, show of hands, who wanna do the exercise, who, who need more than the presentation? All right. All right, show of hands to do one. All right.
Okay, so Turner Enterprises.
So, Lisa, isn't it in the packet? So, do you want to let them read it?
It's in, it's in the packet. So, has everybody read it? We're doing exercise one, public Turner, or Turner Enterprises. So, the question is, has there been sufficient evidence for council to deny the permit? But a court said, "No," that there hadn't been sufficient. Um, based on a whole record test, um, it did not support denial of the permit. And that goes to, basically, opinion testimony is not sufficient to, um, to rebut the presumption that Turner Enterprise, um, showed that they had met, that, um, the burden had been met. They, um, they gave testimony showing that it would not endanger the abutting neighborhoods, and then one of the neigh, some of the neighbors said that they just felt like transient individuals would be staying in the hotel and it would increase the crime in the area. And, um, what they did was, they showed crime statistics from other areas that had extended stay hotels, but they did not have any statistics showing how it would affect that particular area. And the court said, "No," that, um, there had not been sufficient evidence after review of the whole, all the evidence that was given, to rebut the presumption. So, there are some other exercises in here, two other exercises that deal with injured to value, um, to the value of property that you may wanna look at, because that seems to be one of the themes that always comes before council, as to how, that the property would be injured. And the other exercise has to do with, um, harmony in the area. So, that's it. Any questions?
All right, we didn't hurt your feelings, did we?
No, you didn't hurt my feelings, I've got an hour to go before the game, to drive before I can even think about watching it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harper.
Trying to help her. All right, um, moving on, council, to, uh, Councilmember requests four point oh four, oh five. Madam Clerk, you put up the timer? It's not up.
It's on the machine, is it not showing on there?
Mm-mm. All right, real quick, council, we're all familiar with last election... All right. Real quick, council, we all familiar with last election and previous elections, there's a lot of confusion about voting sites, you know, during the early vote, during certain elections. I think this last time was a little different because of the change in locations. Cliffdale was, where certain precincts voted during one election in the primaries. It was a different one during the actual election. We always talk about, we have about an eight to 10% voter turnout. Early vote is convenient. I know if you live in West Fayetteville, the difficulty of, of people getting off work and making it downtown to the Board of Elections at five o'clock is pretty tough. That was a model that began several years ago, but in light of the way and the growth of the city, just wanted for consideration. I know the last time we missed the deadline with the Board of Elections, so I wanted to bring it back to you, see if there was a consensus to see about adding a Western voting location, preferably Cliffdale, since it was the most used for early voting during upcoming elections, so. Madam Clerk, I'm out on time. You had a question, Councilmember?
Yes, sir. Oh.
Hondros, send it here. I'm sorry.
I support this, Mr. Mayor and Principal, and thank you for letting me speak. My question would be, how, you know, what can we afford? How many, how many additional voting places are we trying to, or, you know, I would like staff to tell us how many more we can afford at almost 30,000 a pop and then how we would select the additional one or multiple sites. I think the ones that are most utilized, as you mentioned, Cliffdale Rec is probably the most utilized from the tallies I've seen from Board of Elections. So those are my two concerns, the cost of the city and then how we select which ones, if we do it by historical, you know, the ones that get used the most, I think that's common sense, so.
All right. Well, you know, consensus at night, see if there's enough interest to have staff come back with the details. So Councilmember here and then Benevente.
Thank you, Mayor. I do understand, I've, I've had those discussions and heard the scenarios over the years about having to drive from the west or another deep city limits location off, getting off of work and then of trying to get there at five to the BOE downtown. So I would support the Cliffdale Recreation Center. I think it's, it's close out beyond the, pretty much I call like the outskirts of town. I think it would work to help a lot of our residents that live out in that location. So I could be a positive consensus for Cliffdale Recreation Center along with the Board of Election Office.
Thanks, sir. Councilmember Benevente?
I think the logic here, as you mentioned, sir, was that we get about 10 to 12% and we wanna increase voter participation, voter participation. And then, of course, we want people to be able to get to a location that's nearby their home. I think this, if those two things are truly a concern, at some point we need to revisit moving our elections to even years, where we'll get 40 to 60% voter turnout. Where if we participate in the early voting of federal elections, we'll have dozens of early voting sites throughout the entire city, not just Cliffdale and not just downtown. So I accept the logic of this item. But I think it's interesting that when we talked about moving to even years, I was the only one in support of that, but we're applying this logic now to this much smaller scale. So let's, let's increase voter turnout. Let's, let's start bringing back up even year elections. I think that's something that, if we accept that, this logic in this case, we should extend it to getting 40 to 60% voter turnout in the future.
Thank you, sir. Council, any other questions? All right. So show of hands for consensus to have staff research additional voting locations? Councilmember McNair, you, okay. All right. So thank you, council. All right, Madam Clerk, you reset it for five minutes. Ms. Jennifer? Council, this item shouldn't, won't take long for me to explain. I think pictures are always worth a thousand words. But I was in some, some of our peer city areas recently and a lot of their parking decks and other structures that are government owned, Jennifer, you can move on, you know, have bridges. We have bridges over, you know, the Persson Street Bridge. We have a number of bridges that go over water. This is Durham that just has a, okay, this is Durham that just has one of the bypasses that, that they, you just put simple LED lighting that just really provides a, a nice look. You know, I rode, come in here today and I invite any of you to ride down Ramsey Street to look at that overpass with plywood on the side. It's brown, it's peeling. So our, our community deserves the same thing from DOT. And, and hopefully if, if we can support this effort, we can get staff to work with those people who are in this space and convince DOT. It was, it was years ago, we noticed that, that we were not asking for certain things from DOT. We had the pencil stripe crosswalks and then we started asking for zebra stripes and we got it. We had no landscaping on our bypass right of ways. We asked for it and now you look at 295 and some of the areas that we do it. So we get it if we ask for it. And I think that, you know, our community deserves this, this type of enhancement. So if there's support to it, and these are some of the, just the buildings downtown in this particular community that, you know, simple lighting just changed the whole vibe of it at night, so. There's a parking deck looks very similar to ours across the street. So if, if there's consensus, maybe get the manager to come back and see what that would take that I think would add vibrancy. Question? Oh, all right. Any questions? All right. Councilmember Hondros, send in Thompson.
What are we looking at for funding the actual cost of the lights and then funding the energy, the electricity to power the lights?
So details about budget I don't have. I do know that Cool Springs had spoken to some people in the past that were in this space that had approached us. You know, I don't know if you go, come to the downtown during times when they have the, the little projection on the, on the self-help building. It's a cool, cool little hologram. But I don't have the budget information, but it's just, if there's enough interest, we can get it. Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I enjoy the lights at night. It looks great. But I also like to enjoy keeping residents safe about getting lighting in their communities. I mean, we need lighting on Dunder Road. We need lighting on Lakewood Road. We need lighting on Strickland Bridge. We need lighting on Stony Point Road. So I think we should try to relook these things and make sure that we're taking care of the residents that paid our taxes to give us, to provide what they need to keep them safe, and that's lighting in their communities. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Point A. All right. Councilmember Benevente?
This may be a question for Councilwoman Jensen or maybe someone else. I understand the corridor revitalization committee, I think, has investigated something like this in the past. Mayor Cole, is this something that you just want staff to work on or perhaps that committee as well?
Well, I was actually gonna come to her committee if there was, if there's an interest. That way we wouldn't have them working on something that, that was not an appetite to work on. So certainly would invite or ask the chairwoman to review that.
We are fully in. Some ideas.
All right. That sounds good. All right. Any other questions? All right, council, you got a question? Okay. All right. Is there consensus to move this to the corridors committee to review and get some more specifics for us? All right. Okay, let me, let me get those, those voting, those voting in favor first and then I'll, I'll go with one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay. Seven. All right. And so those voting opposed, Councilmember Thompson, all right, you had a question? I think those are streetlights. Were you talking about streetlights? Yeah. So, so streetlights, we did have a streetlight plan, which is separate from this. But, you know, you have providers. So you have PWC. They, we pushed them and they expanded theirs out west. You do have Lumbee and, and South, South River and Duke who provide some of the others, which we've, we've inquired about. I certainly would like that on the therapy, but some of that's not within the control of the council. Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. All right. All right. So Madam Clerk, that carried. And then last, council, I sent you something. Didn't have a slick for it. It's a printout on your desk. Again, Mayor Sapples' area down in Wilmington was a good example of a downtown venue that they had very similar to ours that stays full of guests and visitors and a vibrancy. So I sent a link to you just to show the schedule, which is full now through September. We had came for consensus probably a year ago to explore Festival Park program and that with, with a local or, or an entertainment venue or company like Wilmington does with Live Oak. And, you know, what they came back and said, we, we didn't really include everyone that needed to be in the RFP, so I don't think we got the responses we needed. But what they basically said was that we have a lot more potential at Festival Park and we're using it kind of like a community asset versus it meeting its full potential as a drawing card. And so, you know, the model we have with Segra works pretty well. The city's giving so many days for community related. But I would like to see if there would be an appetite to, to let us refloat this out here, maybe reach out to Red Hat or to Live Oak to find out who it is they use and to send out something to see how we can maximize Festival Parks as a, as a community drawing card, so. And how much it would cost, yeah. Councilmember Hondros.
Who's currently managing it? I'm guessing staff?
Yeah, Parks, yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I think to fill it up, we need a professional that does that for a living, but my two cents.
All right. Councilmember Jensen and then Thompson? Oh, you want to trick on, quick on the trigger. Councilmember Thompson, you had a question?
I thought that was a great idea, Mr. Mayor, but my question would be is how much revenue would it bring in? I think while I was away this week visiting my mom, I know Raleigh had some type of event in Raleigh that they don't have the, the numbers yet, but they brought in millions and millions and millions of dollars. I'm, I'm pretty sure Fayetteville could do something similar, but just on a smaller scale that could bring some revenue here in Fayetteville.
Well, the big thing is what Mayor Sapples alluded to down there with this addition to Wilmington is that they've had two or three or four hotels pop up, which is something we've been trying to get in the downtown area because you're bringing events and people staying. So that could help us kill two birds with one stone. They bring in a lot of, a lot of revenue. And so I think if, if we explored and do it right and maybe reach out to some of these other communities that have figured it out, come back with council with the pros and cons of it.
The bones are there.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, you think it also helps us bring a direct flight here into Fayetteville?
All of it. All right. Councilmember Benevente and then Banks McGlaugh.
Just for Councilmember Thompson, Dreamville Fest was this past weekend in Raleigh. It brought in over 100,000 people and over, made over $8 million for that community in two days.
Wow.
So I would love for Fayetteville to get to a point where we can handle something like that. But in the meantime, having Live Nation or whoever that person is doing something at Festival Park every weekend, I think would be huge. As opposed to right now, we kinda do things every six to eight weeks or so. But if we're recommending this to staff, I think it's important that while we maybe are transitioning away from being a solely community-based sort of space, that we still leave room for some of our, right, some of our, some of our events that are historic, not historic, but, you know, kind of been there and been doing things, leave some room for them and whatever contracting that we do. Just 'cause I hate for us to box everyone out to make this, you know, solely a money-making venture. It might be the same frequency, every six to eight weeks, there's a free event. But as long as we're sort of leaving room and paying attention to that, because I'd hate for people who used to be able to come there for free stuff feeling like that got taken away because of this. But to those people who feel that way, one, I think we're talking about it now. And then, two, you know, the money-making stuff will be every weekend, which is a lot more often, you know, so. But it sounds like a very exciting idea.
Yeah. And I, and I agree with you. It was not to the exclusion of any, any regular annual programming, so. All right. Questions? All right. Council, show of hands, those in favor of having staff? Oh, Councilmember Banks McGlaugh, I'm sorry.
No, no. Thank you, Mary. Councilmember Benevente pretty much said what I was gonna say, just making sure that we aren't leaving out our local artists.
Our legacy events.
Yes, yes. Because we could have, if things, you know, if we would have had everything lined up, we could have had our very own, Lord, what's, Dream, Dreamville here in our city, so, yes.
For our namesake. And that's where the ville part of the dream comes from, so I hope y'all hear that. But we just gotta get up our hotel capacity that I know we can, we can get there. All right. Show of hands for Madam Clerk. All right. Thank you, council. There's a motion to adjourn. Go watch some basketball, Ms. Harper.
I thought she was gone.